Board of Education meeting this January fourteenth to order at six thirty P M. Please silence or turn off your electrical devices. If you could, please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Mrs. Johnson, could you please call roll?
Biankeen. She's not here today. Oh, she won't be here at all today?
That's correct.
Okay. Camardo?
Here.
Friedland?
Here.
Grimpy?
Here.
I am here. Fister?
Here.
Ronstadt?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Can I entertain a motion and a second to go into closed session for the matters of personnel at six thirty-one?
So move second.
Move by Friedland, second by Fister.
Okay, hang on. At six, six what was this?
Six thirty-one.
Thank you. And. Okay, I'm ready. Fister?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
Grimpy?
Yes.
Friedland?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And where are we going first?
Uh, we can just walk down the R room.
Okay.
Nobody's gonna ask.
Let me get a motion and a second to resume an open session at seven oh two.
Move second.
Move by Fister and second by Friedland.
Okay, got it. Okay. Camardo?
Yes.
Uh, Fister?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes.
Friedland?
Yes.
Grimpy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Did I get everybody?
You did. All right, next up is a consent agenda. Looking over the consent agenda, are there any items that a member would like to remove and further discuss? Or is there a question of clarification? And I would like to pull the personnel report, letter B, from the consent agenda.
And I would like to pull G, um, the Chromebooks.
Okay. All right, let me entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items A, B, only report A, C, D, E, and F as presented, which includes the following: The Board of Education meeting minutes from December tenth, twenty twenty-four, the personnel report A, actual bills, actual payrolls, bills and checks, the travel report, press one hundred seventeen packet, and the Illinois Vision twenty thirty resolution.
So.
Second.
Move by Friedland, second by Camardo.
Okay.
Could you please call roll?
Yes. Grimpy?
Yes.
I vote yes. Fister?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes.
And Friedland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, let me entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda item B, report B, which is a request for leave.
Yeah, motion.
Motion and second.
Second.
Move by Ronstadt, second by Friedland. And I'll open up the discussion. Uh, it's probably one of the more difficult discussion conversations that we've had as a board, certainly for this year, this school year. Uh, and one of the things that we took, uh, under consideration the most is really the welfare and the education of our, of the kids in our district. That, that's really what we're here for. And we really discussed this thoroughly. I'm of the opinion to not grant the leave, uh, so that we could get, um, some stability in the, in the, in the position and back in the classroom for the kids. I open the floor. If anybody else would like to make any comments?
I'll say it was difficult. It. It pulls at heartstrings. But, um, we're here for kids, we're for educating children, so, yeah, so it was very difficult.
Anyone else like the, sure. Okay, can you please call roll? Uh, this is if you're supporting the leave, uh, you would vote yes. If you're not supporting the leave, you would vote no.
Friedland?
No.
So what were we doing? If you're supporting it, it's a yes.
If you approve the leave, it's a yes. If you do not approve the leave, it would be a no.
Okay. Okay. Grimpy?
No.
Ronstadt?
No.
I vote no. Camardo?
No.
And Fister?
No.
Motion carries.
Does not care.
Does. Well, the motion carries that we voted.
Oh, okay, I got you. Sorry. Uh, our next motion will be, can I get an entertaining, entertaining motion and a second to table the consent agenda item G, which is a Chromebook purchase until all bids are received and reviewed at a later meeting? Now, motion?
Second.
Move by Grimpy, second by Fister?
Um, the reason I pulled it is because, um, with a purchase of that amount of money, we usually have, you know, I call them bids, but they're more quotes. We usually have three to five quotes. And in going back and looking through all of the board packets, I couldn't find where we discussed this purchase. And the last time we talked about Chromebooks to, with this amount of money, was back at the January nineteenth board. And, um, there's nothing in there that says that the price on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four is good for one year. So, in the, in the vein of transparency, we really should have, um, the five quotes or three quotes. So that's why I pulled it.
Can I just ask your, your input on something? If, if we get quotes for our next meeting, would you be okay with getting them for a year with the board? It's not anything we would vote on right now, obviously.
Well, yeah, if they hold the price for a year.
Gotcha.
You know, because I went back and I looked, we bought four hundred and I took the dollar amount and divided it by four hundred.
Sure.
And it came out to something like three hundred forty-three dollars. And then I looked at what we're, um, going to purchase here, and it came out to be like three hundred forty dollars. So it's a little bit cheaper, but still transparency, maybe those other people that we were getting quotes from back in twenty twenty-four will come down.
Sure.
You know, maybe a year later, they.
I'm just asking to give direction for, for, for future.
For future, sure.
So has that typically been the way that it's functioned in the past?
What, that they hold it for a year? No.
No. And then how often?
Whenever you do it, they, we get the new quote.
Every time?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you'll, you'll see it every year.
Yeah.
Just because we, we refresh every year.
Right, for the.
And then until, like last year, the model timed out and/or we moved to like the touchscreen, so.
Well, the year before that.
So basically, it's the same day.
Because of closing out, we got a better price.
Right, right.
But I, I think in general too, when we receive a quote or a request for purchase, I think there's some general expectation that's going to be made relatively soon.
Oh, no doubt.
Yeah, but so I'm saying if we hold that price for a year, that's not, I'm not sure that's really the intent.
Right.
We can ask. If anyone wants to give it to us, I'm happy to take it, but I think it's unlikely. I, I understand your point, I agree with you.
Technology, I mean, you know, it, it does tend to lower in price, not always, but, you know.
Well, with the new administration, we have tariffs, we might be paying more, who knows?
Let's cross that bridge when we get through, but still, but okay. So I was just curious if we have, we always get, we have, whenever you have a purchase this large, you just get the quotes?
Sure. Any other comments before we call roll? Okay.
So this is a motion to table it.
Correct.
Okay, so we're tabling it. Okay, Ronstadt?
Yes, table.
Yes, that is, yes, to table.
Tabling, yes. Camardo?
Yes.
Friedland?
Yes.
I vote yes. Fister?
Yes.
And Grimpy?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, so we approve the rest of the consent agenda. We now approve the items that we pulled. Consent agenda is off the agenda.
Correct.
All right, next up is the public hearing. Hereby entertain a motion and a second to open a public hearing at seven ten P M. With the intent of the Board of, Board of Education to sell not to exceed four million eight hundred thousand of working cash fund bonds.
No.
So, okay. Move by Fister, second by Camardo.
Okay.
Yes, please call roll so we can go into, uh, public hearing. That's okay.
Uh, Ronstadt?
Yes.
Grimpy?
Yes.
I vote yes. Fister?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
And Friedland?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Now we can call.
Ryan, you have this?
Yeah, um, so we're now in a public hearing, which gives, uh, members of the public, um, time to voice their, either, um, concern or excitement over the selling of the working cash bonds. Things are very similar to what Ms. Tennessee, um, presented a few months ago. I think, uh, overall, um, interest rates were cut another four hundred percent in December, which should help us with the sale.
So are there any members of the public or the board that would like to approach the board and speak about the selling of the working cash fund bonds? Okay, hearing done. Uh, we can adjourn the public hearing. So after no further public comment with regards to the board selling the working cash fund bonds, I hereby adjourn the public hearing. Board in intent to sell four million eight hundred thousand in working cash fund bonds at seven twelve P M.
May I request a motion and a call for adjourning the public hearing?
Yeah, that, we'll do that next, and then, and then we'll, then the actual selling is an action item later on in the meeting.
Yes.
We got you covered.
Okay, so I need a motion?
I will be the motion.
Okay.
Second.
And Friedland is the second.
So we're voting yes or no to adjourn the pub, adjourn the public hearing?
Correct.
Grimpy?
Yes.
Friedland?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes.
Fister?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so motion carries.
All right, next up is R T E A comments. Bob, you have the floor.
Good evening. To say that I'm disappointed about your decision regarding personnel report would be a gross understatement. I think that you have been quite misinformed by the board's lawyer and that this is not in the best interest of this staff member, nor is it in the best interest of the children to take the stance which you've taken. What you've now allowed to happen, instead of giving this individual respite for the remainder of the year, is you've given them the opportunity to return and limp through the rest of the year, giving both them and the children a subpar environment. Instead of keeping a long-term sub or going out and trying to find an individual to take their place for the rest of the year, now they will be forced back to do their job in their current condition. I realize that you likely discussed this. I realize that it was a difficult decision. I know that this is a voluntary position which you have on this Board of Education. I know that it is difficult to come to some, some of these decisions. Remember too, that any of you, which is all of you, since you have reached consensus, any of you who voted on the prevailing side may call the question again and ask for it to be revisited. I would implore you to do as much, although I know that that's very unlikely considering you have reached consensus at this point. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up is visitor's comments. At this time, I'd like to recognize any members of the audience who approach the board with their comment or question by completing a visitor comment card. Please do note that the board and administration typically does not respond. If you wish or respond, please provide your name and number or email for a member of the board of administration, board or administration to get back to you. Speakers are encouraged to limit their time for others to participate. A three-minute time limit per speaker with an overall sixty-minute maximum for visitor comment per art burn policy. Hearing done. Uh, we'll move on to board communication, and this is an open agenda for any board member to share anything they've experienced in the district. Been a short time since we've been back.
It's nice to be here at Euclid.
It's great to be here at Euclid. Still looks great, still smells nice.
It smells, you can still smell the paint.
Karen, you haven't broken it yet. That's good.
Yeah, I love the positive. Brian said they'll build, thank you.
We don't have to have any.
No, Mrs. Friedland and I had a nice dinner with, um, R T A board members, Mrs. Rocko and Mrs. Collins tonight. It was a very chilly night, but warm and cozy in a restaurant. We just had a good time. I actually liked meeting earlier and I hope they feel the same, because it was like a four-thirty dinner, but hopefully they can go home ready. So it is just a nice place. There's just wonderful food, so thank you. Thank you for allowing me to come to you.
Anybody else? I'd have the kids back in school.
Yeah.
Good to have the kids back in school.
Yeah.
Based on the calendars, there's a lot going on, very busy.
Or based on your whole life.
Yeah. Can't be both.
All of them, yes.
All right, next up is new business, education services. This is district recognition and Euclid school updates.
Hi, I'm podium, and I'm going to stand off to the side, if that's okay. And, um, I just, on behalf of Euclid and our admin team and our celebration of our S E L team, thank you for coming to Euclid to be here with us tonight in our new digs. It's kind of weird to see this because we haven't done this yet before, but it's actually quite, like, perfect. So, yay. Um. Let me test it. Yes, yes, okay. Um, so you've seen this before from Mr. Timmons and Mr. Henkel already this year, and our school goals are always directly influenced by just this mindset of we're starting with our strategic plan, with who we are as a school district and working our way all the way down to the individual student goals. And, um, what is very helpful is every year Jody's really clearly concerned with the admin team in terms of what her goals are for the district and how then we all work together and what that means for our schools. Um, you saw this with Bill and Kyle before. And so this is our starting point, and it really, the goal of this year for us in general has been to take what's already working and strengthen it. We're not in that mindset, and I'm very grateful for this, that it's, oh, let's add the new shiny toy, oh, let's add that new great program. We are doing some things really well. Let's make sure we can sustain those things. And there's certain things that we do that we need to strengthen. Let's strengthen, strengthen those and then make sure that we have sustainability and consistency, whether it's within a building or across the school district. You'll see that throughout this presentation, how we have used multiple data points from different data sets that we receive. They're very data-rich, so it's nice to know that, what are we using that for? And then I plan to share some of the impact our consistent and collaborative systems are having on the goals that we have here at Euclid. So this screen, um, this next visual is something that my teachers and my staff are very familiar with. It is our, it's Euclid's areas of focus. So this is taking Jody, Dr. Magrile's, goals for the district and bringing them to what that means for us here at Euclid. And so we have these four key areas. And what's important to know about having areas of focus is it allows our teachers to hone in on what's most important. If you ask a teacher what is one of the hardest things outside of the people, it's that there's so much on their plate. And so one of my most important jobs is helping teachers understand how they can prioritize all those things on their plate. And so these four areas, while very much overlapping and interconnected, allow us to consistently go back to, this is what's most important on our plate. And so, for example, it's really important for me as a leader to make sure that they know these four areas and that in their conversations and their planning, they always bring themselves back to this. So at the beginning of the year, I did test them, um, what are our four areas of focus? And I will tell you, in September, after a few staff meetings and seeing this a few times, let me put it up, but I make sure I read it, almost forty percent of the staff did not identify any of the four. So that's not good, but I expected that at the beginning of the school year, right? So just last week, however, sixty percent of the sample of staff that I had with me identified all of the core elements. So we went from forty percent not identifying any to sixty-five percent identifying the core of our elements, and all but one teacher identified at least two. So that, I'm really proud of that, and that's right after winter break. So we hadn't seen each other for, you know, in a staff development experience for a while. So, you know, I make them take these little surveys. They don't know what I'm doing with that, but I'm really testing my work. Am I being consistent? Am I being repetitive? Am I being crystal clear about what's a priority here at Euclid? And so that's very important in terms of, uh, professional learning and setting those criteria goals. So tonight I'm going to talk a little bit about attendance, harkening back to last year's goals. I want to talk about our social emotional learning. Mr. Timmons talked a lot about the social emotional learning goals in the district, and I'm going to kind of tag on to that, but go in a little bit different direction. And then we're going to end the evening, um, bringing it back to our head-ready goals and our academic discourse. So first, we're going to talk about attendance, and I want to remind you that, um, this has been a concern for our district. It's a national concern, and last year nationally, the, um, estimated chronic absentee rate was between twenty-five and twenty-eight percent, which is way higher than where we are as a district. But I just want to kind of give you an idea of how bad it can be and how bad it really is nationally. Uh, last year, we ended the year at Euclid at about fourteen percent, if you remember that from my little story. I think her name was Lucy. We shared a story about Lucy. And when I counted for travel, that fourteen percent turned into a little bit over seven percent of chronic absentee rate. So we were doing a really good job, our S E L team, supporting families, supporting kids, supporting teachers, communicating, getting kids to school. So with that work, again, a system that we started last year, a very specific tiered, starting pretty low, teacher phone call home, little bit higher, social worker phone call home, little bit higher, admin phone call home, little bit higher, parent meeting, that kind of stuff, which just kind of increases depending on the individual student. Well, we have a whole new social work team this year, and we had to take that system that we created and not only strengthen it, but make sure that what we created was sustainable. So how are we doing? Well, this is how we're doing, and I pulled this data the week after the week of, right before winter break, so the end of December. Less than seven percent of our first through fifth graders are chronically absent. That's awesome, because that's already half of where we ended last year. And then of those only twenty-one kids, which doesn't sound like a lot, but we're a smaller school, so that is seven percent of our population, ten of those student percentages are chronic numbers due to family trips. So what's really cool about that is that that is technically our controllable number. This is the number that we have and we can have an impact on in terms of relationships, communications, mentoring, plans that we might have with students and families. So that was really exciting for me to really dig into those numbers. And it is literally digging into individual student records, individual student names, reasons for absences, to deeply understand this. Now, before I go to the next celebration, I do want to share with you, um, we currently have ten students different than these guys, um, out of the country. So two of those ten have already missed last week completely. The rest of those students are targeted to miss this week and even more. And where are they? They're in Europe, they're in, uh, the Middle East, they're in, um, India, they're in Mexico. They're all over the world, and they go for a long period of time. So this number is going to adjust, and this is actually a little forewarning for my S E L team sitting in the audience because we haven't had a chance to look at numbers yet, but they're not looking really pretty. But we're starting at a much healthier place, um, heading into the travel season than we did last year. So I'm so proud of the work of the S E L team and the teachers, the relationships that we've built with families and students. So that, to me, is an enormous celebration. And again, going back to Jody's, uh, areas of focus, her goals for our district, this is an example of how this collaborative system and our S E L team supports all of the, the teachers in the building. So we meet at a weekly data review, and the S E L team meets with monthly team, monthly team connections, and we look at all of these different types of data sets. And that's where we assign communication points. And then we've got those boots on the ground, and that's our entire staff. It's not just the S E L team, it's our tier one, it's our homeroom teachers, it's our M C S S teachers, and it's our second step, which you heard a lot from Bill about, it's being at those times in the school day where kids are at their most natural state, lunch and recess, hallways, and building those relationships. And then again, you've got a tiered response. Some of it's really basic. Some people don't really need communication, and some people need a lot of support. And then you've got it falling all in the middle of that. So we communicate all kinds of different ways, through newsletters, phone calls, emails, text messages, um, in-person meetings, mentors. And our mentors, by the way, are whatever staff is available and connected to a kid, and it doesn't matter what their role is in the building. And my biggest goal as principal of Euclid is that concept of collaborative and systemic, but sustainable. If it's working, how do we make sure it's working when I'm not standing in the room, when Mrs. Hogan's not standing in the room? We want to make sure that things continue that are working. So moving on with that, the social emotional learning, this is kind of where I wanted to get into my celebration, specifically of the S E L team. We, um, one of the concerns that we've had, of fears, like, we had two social workers coming into a school that has a lot of needs for a variety of reasons. And Jenna Welsh and Orelli Flores and Beth Osley, who is our psychologist, but also contributes to the S E L team and is a part of the social work staff. But Jenna and Orelli are here, so I want you guys to wave because, um, I'm so proud of the work that they've done already, the impact they've made already on this, on our staff, the relationships they've built with staff. I mean, they're two newer, not hundred percent new, but newer, social workers in the field, and, um, their presence in classrooms and hallways, literally at lunch and recess, if not every day. One of them is somewhere in lunch and recess every day. Solution, this is my favorite part in this, this celebration. When we hire people who are solution-oriented, who are action-oriented, student-centered attitudes, and those actions are based in students, and what I mean by that is they're in the lunchroom, they see a problem, they hear about the problems, they don't come to me and tell me about the problem. They've literally come to me and said, so this is happening, and here's what we want to do, can we try this? And my favorite thing to say to people is yes, let's try it. Um, and so I've been able to say yes to a lot of ideas. And so one of the things that they have done is worked with our lunch recess supervisors and a couple resource teachers to figure out how to increase communication from our lunch recess supervisors through teachers, how to increase, um, student decision-making and making good choices at lunch and recess in students forget stuff over winter break on top of that. So we put, they put some systems in place in lunch, especially in the lunchroom, and then coming back anticipated that, you know what, kids are going to need a refresher. We know that, we always do refreshers. But instead of it coming from us, the idea was, well, let's have kids give the message. Of course, that's a better idea. And let's recruit and plan with and practice with and then record kids showing us what's expected at lunch and recess. So that's what I have to share with you, is a couple videos about lunch and recess at Euclid School. Um, do I just hit play, or do I?
Oh.
Oh, you got it. Thanks, Patty.
But the sound is. Concerning.
So those were some of our third graders. And you saw the red card, the green card, and it's not about a silent lunch, it's just about a little bit of more controlled chaos. And then we do have a universal symbol of get quiet in our school, so we don't have to raise our voices at kids, and so we're practicing some symbol like that. And then this is fifth graders at recess.
Can we get these kids to do this at home?
Sure, so where can I get them to do it at school? My favorite piece is just that, I remember when we hired this team, we said, we need you to become a part of who we are and make us, who are already great, but make us even better. And they, and I want to say yes. And I'm just so proud of the action-oriented, the solution-oriented, the kid-centered approach that this team has. So I really wanted to celebrate our new social workers this year and let you know that they are having a hugely positive impact on the school, and it's just this January. So yay for that, and thank you. We do show, we did show the videos already during morning announcements, and it's just going to add to our arsenal of communication for all of our students. The next, the last year I want to celebrate a little bit is just kind of landing in our academic discourse, our head-ready goals. You've seen a document or a visual just like this from Kyle and both, both Kyle and Bill. What I do want to point out is that this is based on MAPS scores. But one of the things I want to focus on, and I, because I didn't get the visual to work, but it's really this balanced and targeted area. What is that? And so when we look at all school data, we usually just look at the whole thing, and then we end up focusing on the struggles, right? The subgroups of kids who are struggling, whatever that demographic is, whatever that subgroup is. And so one of the things I wanted to share with the board tonight is that, once we got rid of that winter MAPS score, which is great, because we don't need another data point for all our kids. But what we did do, and I did this in concert with Bill and even, and with Kyle, is we looked at student growth over time, and we pulled specific kids based on their growth, regardless of whether it was, there were kids who followed lower spectrum of percentages or the higher levels, so whether they're at that below forty percentile, so this is the lower achievement, whether the higher percentile, those kids who are functioning and performing very high in the test, didn't matter. I was looking at how are they doing over time? And if they're not growing at the rate at which makes me feel good as a principal, as a teacher, as a parent, then I want to know how they're doing. I want another data point. And so what I want to share with you is the group that I tested this winter, fifty percent of those kids fell in that targeted growth, that were already performing above the eightieth percentile, but I noticed they weren't growing in the way I wanted them to be growing over the last year. I'm not worried about their achievement, not worried about their achievement at all. Some of these kids are even in our ACE program. What I'm concerned about is are they growing at the rate they should be growing, because our responsibility is to teach all kids regardless of demographic. So yes, while I am, as a principal and with staff, looking at those black X's, those places we didn't hit, I'm also looking really at that growth, and that's, that's going to be up here, meaning they're exceeding their target, their growth target. And so right there, we're doing pretty well. This is achievement, and there's so many other factors that go into achievement, but we're still, we're still keeping our goals high. So I just wanted to kind of point out a little bit of perspective on what those different rows actually mean to us. Another area of head-ready that we spent a lot of time on this year, and this really is driving our work this year at Euclid, it's also driving the work at IG. So what I share with you today is similar to the work happening at IG that Bill may not have spent a lot of time talking about a couple months ago. But on our five essentials here at Euclid, quality of student discussion and interesting survey data point, it was the highest increase from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. It still remains our second lowest point. So it's still way too low, but it's going in the right direction. So again, to me, that's to Jody's, to Dr. Meggerli's point, taking something that's working and really making it sustainable. So we are focusing on this idea of quality of student discussion, and that just gives you an idea of what some of the questions were. Are students respectfully engaging in back and forth discussion, using evidence to support their thinking, and giving each other constructive feedback? And are they actually participating? And so if you recall, discourse is one of our four areas of focus. And part of the work that we did as a staff earlier in the year was come to an understanding that these other three areas are all fed through discourse. We talk about all of these things, we write about all of these things, we read about all of these things, we think about all of these things, and we use critical thinking and our emotional development, our metacognition through discourse to communicate with each other. So this has been and continues to be a very big part of what we're learning together as a staff. How do we bring meaningful discourse into the classroom so that we can make sure our students are critically thinking, that they're thinking about their thinking and metacognition, and that they're developing emotionally? We know that research tells us lots of different kinds of research, it's just one data, it's just one research study, that the more they talk, the better they're going to do on achievement tests. So that's something that's very important for us here at Euclid. This document has become an anchor document for our staff here. We have shared it with IG, and they use it in a different way. Staff here at Euclid actually created the content in the bottom half of this document. Again, you'll see at the top, those are our four areas of focus. That middle line, environment, supports, opportunities, had to do with work we did through Christie and our math program. And so discourse isn't just in literacy, it's also in math, it's very much a part of our math program. And so when we ask teachers, what does that look like in classrooms? They're the experts. The staff in this district are so profoundly expert at what they do, we are remiss not to pull that from them. And so through some adaptive strategies, through some collaborations, we were able to create this document. And right now, these two areas, through research-based practices, through leadership facilitating, through me, facilitating that growth and change, we are on our way. And I just want to also point out that several years ago, you as a board approved the adaptive schools training for the administrative team, and I believe it was probably a little bit of money. And then we've shared that on with some of our staff. That training is feeding the work that we're doing here at Euclid, and it's feeding the work that's happening in classrooms. I literally have a teacher who's buying that book with her own money, says she doesn't care that it's like a textbook, because she's so excited to start really putting these in place, because my staff meetings look like a classroom, like I want a classroom to look like. So my teachers are experiencing what is expected in the classroom, and they're really excited about it. I'm super proud of the hard work of our staff here. I love, I just, I could go on, and I'm not going to go on none. We're focused, we're unwavering, and we're intentional, and it keeps getting better from week to week. And on behalf of our staff, students, and our community, we're really grateful for your support, because without it, you know, we wouldn't be standing here in this beautiful space with just these amazing opportunities to make a difference for our kids. So thank you so much. Any questions?
It's a great presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question, but it might, it might be more for the administration. Okay, so, yeah. Since I have been on the board a long time, there was a time, and I'm going to say in the nineties probably, when students who left the country for more than a week were disenrolled, and then that doesn't affect your absentee records and all that. Is that something we can go back to do?
Okay, we've gone round and round about this over probably the last five or six years, but it's highly discouraged to do that to families now. I don't even think it's allowed by the state anymore. You know, plus the fact that, like, you know, these kids are coming back, we want them to come back as soon as they get back into town, but to have to put families through the hurdles of bringing their residency, of filling out forms online, it delays the kids coming back. And it does have some other trickle effects, but yeah, can't do it.
So that's what, we learned that actually last year, that it's, it's like against the rules to actually do that.
Really?
Yeah, so, but that's partly why I think it's important we dig into understanding what the percent, what the numbers are, so that we're doing what we can with what we have an impact over, and there's certain things that we just can't control.
Oh, I understand that.
But I appreciate the question.
Yeah, because there's a lot of, like, right now, there's a lot of cultural things going on over in India, and I can see where people who are of their culture, they would want to be there. So, yeah, I understand. I was just curious if it's something they do anymore.
I guess it's a really good question.
We did do it up until...
Last year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, I want to applaud all your efforts on the chronic absenteeism, the national numbers are frightening for our future. All the data points to, you know, one of the first steps to getting a good education is being here, you got to show up. And that's, you know, it starts in school, but that also goes into life, that, you know, in a work environment, you, you know, just, you got to, you got to show up, because it's just, that's step one. And I understand, you know, there's cultural reasons and all this, and I understand too that it's a personal decision that people make to bring their kids out of school, and they have, of course, the right to do that. But it's also a little frustrating, because, and it does have an impact on our community, because we are staffing to teach those children. We are, you know, just beautiful building and the facilities to, you know, cater to those children. Also, I have to imagine when they come back, there's effort on the behalf of the teachers and the staff to catch that child up, which can take away from the education for other students. There's also a possible impact to the student scores, to the testing scores, which is something that we're emphasizing as a district to, you know, continue to improve, to help. So, you know, while it may be an individual's personal decision, and I'm not totally not guilty of this either, you know, there's been a long weekend or two, and I'm sure in the years that my kids have been going to school, that I might have pulled them out, but, you know, I really think that, you know, there is that, there, I hope, and I'm kind of talking to some of the parents out there, that, you know, think about that, that that's not necessarily just an impact to, or your decision, but it does have an impact to the rest of the school and to your community and to, and to the other kids in the classroom. I really do applaud you for working on getting, you know, addressing some of the other more controllable instances, because that really is in the benefit of the, of the students, the staff, and the larger community to get them, to get them here. So thank you for that.
Just comment. I like, I appreciate your focus of this past year on building upon what you already started last year. And I think oftentimes you say, we want to see improvements and all, this connotes with starting a new initiative and always new, 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 when you could have taken your first idea and really saw it all the way to fruition. So with your example and the absenteeism and that anchor document, and this wasn't the first time we saw that, so to build upon that and seeing the results of having that initial idea, I think is great. So it doesn't have to be new every year, and I think too often it's always like, what's the next hottest thing? Good job. See you later.
Thank you. And I was wondering if you have any reflection on the new building, like positives, negatives? Do you feel at home back in the new space?
Used to it now, yes. I do walk in on a daily basis and feel like, oh, yeah, this is Euclid. It took a little while. I think my favorite understanding is if you were to ask teachers generally, they love it. It's so pretty, it's clean, it's fresh. It's the doors that are closed all the time makes me feel safe for the building. I really appreciate that. It does also create a very quiet building, which is a little weird, because there's better sound quality, so that's another reflection. You walk around, you're like, it's so quiet, is that okay? Like, I know there's children here learning, I know there's hundreds of them here learning, but it's, it's absolutely, the kids love it. I mean, we're taking care, they're taking care of it, and that's just part of the culture, you know, to pick up when you see trash on the floor and that kind of thing. So it's easy to take care of something that's yours, right? That's ours, that, and we care about it, so it's good.
I'm going to generalize, I still, I really love the format that this is moved to and being able to come back to the buildings and to see you in your own space, and to just be able to have, you know, individuals come in. I appreciate the SEL work, obviously, as always, it's one of my favorite areas, because I just think it's so critical to all the life skills that our students develop. You know, it's hard to learn if you're not in a place where you can regulate personally or with other peers. So again, wonderful presentation.
So this is repetitive for the board, but I want each principal to hear it. The bar that Jody has set for you guys to meet when you present has been fantastic.
Yes.
And how these presentations have changed over the years is awesome, and it really makes me look forward to more than I have in the past. So thank you for meeting that, that bar. The other, and it kind of takes us full circle, we did our own professional development as a board, we have to every year, and I don't know if you guys remember, but we had a slide that said, it was like ninety-plus percent of employees have no idea what their own company's goals are, and you hit sixty percent, and that's phenomenal. So I just wanted to point that out.
Sixty percent know all four.
Well, correct.
Ninety-nine, too.
Yeah, exactly. Focus on the positive.
And I will say a hundred percent, except for the one, and the one in the room that didn't get it was, is new, like new, like an out, leave back since a sub person, so that was the one person, because I know my audience. But they all picked discourse. Everyone picked that one as, and you saw that one slide, that was, that's discourse through which we are doing all of these other things. So, yeah, that's true.
And I even brought that to my own work, and I don't even know what my own company's goals are. And I said it to my boss, and I still am employed, which is crazy.
That's great.
I applaud your efforts for the presentation and everything you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, business services, is the approval of the selling of the working cash fund bond. This is an action item. Ryan, there's really nothing else to present, we can just go over it. Okay, great. Let me entertain a motion, a second, to approve the selling of the working cash fund bonds at an amount not to exceed four million eight hundred thousand dollars. Moved by Fisterer, second by Grimpy. Any comments or questions before we call roll? Okay, Mr. Johnson, please call roll, please.
Friedland?
Yes.
I vote yes. Fisterer?
Yes.
Grimpy?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes.
And Komaroff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is the five-year transportation contract for Grand Prairie. This is also an action item. Ryan, are you presenting this?
Yes. So last month, the board requested, after looking at all the submittals, that we bring back the contract, since it is a large dollar amount and over a five-year span. So presented tonight is the contract. Reading it over, it seems very boilerplate. I did have the district attorney look it over, he approved it. Attached also are the bid specs that we did put out in October, and then the bid response... Attached also are the bid specs that we did put out in October, and then the bid response that Grand Prairie did submit, the full response that they submitted in November.
The one thing I want to point out, if I may, is some people may just think, okay, this was an effort of futility because we're with the same company. But the fact that the contract you've got is lower than what we're on makes it a win. So I just want to make sure that's pointed out, too. Is everybody here, but anyone watching in here?
I think my takeaway from this, or maybe learning, was I think we, and we have a great relationship, sorry, I want to say, and it was weird COVID and after COVID times, so we just kept renewing, but it doesn't hurt to go out to bid, to reset things, maybe.
Let me get a motion and a second, and then we can go into discussion before we approve. So let me entertain a motion and a second to award the five-year contract to Cook, Illinois Grand Prairie Transit.
Still moved.
Moved by Friedland?
Second.
Second by Ronstadt. And any comments or questions?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I like all the extra information that you provided to the board, because we've, I've never seen specs before. So that was very nice, and I'd like to see Grand Prairie's response to those specs. So thank you very much for putting that in there, even though I don't think anybody asked for it. But I will ask for the numbers. Now that I know you can do it.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd like to echo Donna's comments. I'm really very, very pleased with this whole process, you know. Last year, we kind of pushed to go out for bid this year, and, you know, I think it was a good, a good exercise in evaluating our options. I think that we've got a fantastic contract here. We're saving, you know, not only are we saving money, you know, for their, our community and our taxpayers as a whole here, but, you know, I think that it helps to, you know, build that accountability and that relationship with our vendor. And, yes, I absolutely am very grateful for all of the information here and all of the hard work that you, Mr. Murray, have done, and Jody actually have been involved in this. So thank you very much.
I did want to, sorry about that. I just wanted to point out, and I'm sure you read it, but just be crystal clear about the $2 million grant for the electric buses. That was a separate piece of the bid where the companies could bid on that. And so Grand Prairie did not want to invest in that. And again, we knew that, because we are working with Grand Prairie, but we weren't comfortable foregoing. And also, I will end up turning down the $2 million grant for the electric buses. We have electric bus. I think the concept is great, but we have lived that life and know that, you know, it hasn't been completely smooth. There are things to work out, some kinks, and I think for us now is not the time to turn over and tie the fleet to electric. So I'm sure these incentives will come up at some point again, but I just want to make sure you all saw that in the recommendation.
Great point, thank you. Anyone else? Good, could you call roll, please?
Sure. Ronstadt?
Yes.
Pfisterer?
Yes.
Grimpie?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
I vote yes. Friedland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next up is the approval of the fiscal year '24 audit. This is an information and action item. Ryan, are you and Joe both present?
I was just going to introduce Mr. Joe Lightcap from Baker Tilly to give the audit. Well, it's good to see you, thanks for coming back.
Thanks for having me. Yep, so we'll be discussing a little bit about the fiscal year '24 audit. I'll be going over it at a very high level. I know you've received the information in the board packet and some other financial information that Brian put together, so I won't be discussing too many of the numbers, but obviously you've seen them, you have them, if you have any questions, we can, we can take a break at any time and go over them. So I'll be going over the annual comprehensive financial report first, and then our audit results letter, which is a much smaller document, second. So the, for the financial kind of highlights, the district has once again the draft score of recognition from the Illinois State Board of Education on the financial profile score. As you might remember, the highest score is 4.0. The district, the draft number this year is 3.8 out of 4. It's down a little bit from last year, it was 3.9 last year, just with the issuance of debt, it kind of takes one of the metrics down, but as you pay that debt off, you'll be, you'll be fine. Probably the, you know, you did, you used it for good, for good purposes, so probably the least important from a perspective. But again, good financial results related fiscal year '24. So this is an annual comprehensive financial report, which, as the name suggests, is a comprehensive document, much more comprehensive than what accounting standards require. It has additional information in the front, transmit a letter that gives a good information on the district's kind of goals and objectives, and some internal controls and things like that. And then statistical information in the back, so you have a good 10-year information, trend history, you can see how the district's finances have gone over the 10. We did issue once again a clean or a modified opinion on the district's financial statements, which means it's the highest level of assurance you can get from your auditors. States that the information within is reasonable in all material respects. It can be reasonably relied upon by outside use of the financial standards. So again, what you want to see in the few pages that we provide for the opinion. There were no new accounting policies adopted, no new standards implemented, so really the annual comprehensive financial reporting form and function looks pretty much the same as it has the last couple of years, no new big numbers that the accounting standard board has required you to include, anything like that, so it's pretty comparable to the prior year. I always like to give a plug to management's discussion and analysis, which is at about page five of the report. This is management's information to the reader, put in management's word. It's much easier to read than the rest of the report, that is, accounting standards pretty much tell you exactly what the rest of it needs to be. This is management's, kind of like how the year went, the financial highlights that are important, the date, consider important, that they want the reader to know about. It's a good place to go, if you have 10, 15 minutes to really understand what happened during the year, that's where we talk. I wasn't really going to get into any of the numbers, but of course, if you have any questions, I can take that right now, take a little bit of a pause before I get into the other report, just if you have any questions on financials.
Well, we could, why don't we take the motion and a second, then we can open it for discussion. So let me entertain a motion and a second to accept the fiscal year '24 comprehensive annual financial report.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Ronstadt and second by Pfisterer. Anyone like to comment?
Nice report, is all.
Absolutely. One of the things that I'd like to point out is obviously we went from Lindell, who has been with the district for a very long time, so there's a lot of kudos to go around. Either Lindell left everything in a nice, easy way for Ryan to decipher it and organize it in his own way, or Ryan did a great job in transitioning from Lindell to Ryan, but also, obviously, Dr. Mergley did a great job finding Ryan and getting him to come over and keeping the ship afloat and going in the right direction. Again, thank you for your report, and kudos to the team.
Just on that note, I might just give Mr. Lightcap and his team a big kudos as well. Not only myself, but Mr. Capo is also new in the business office, and probably two of the three major people to provide information from Mr. Lightcap and his team.
So the seasoned veteran was the auditor, really.
Yeah.
He was my team, they get all the credit. I come in at the end. They kept us on track and did a very nice job as well, so, deserved.
Anything else before we call roll?
Always my favorite document of the year to read.
Yeah, love the executive summary.
It's mine. You guys know it's mine.
Absolutely.
I have a drawer going all the way back to 1986 of these.
And she's not being sarcastic.
I'm not being sarcastic. So when you say 10 years, I go back and I look sometimes, see how we've been doing. It's really cool. Okay.
Could you please call roll?
Yeah.
And again, this is to approve the financial report.
Yeah, to accept it. Grimpie?
Yes.
I vote yes. Friedland?
Yes.
Camardo?
Yes.
Ronstadt?
Yes.
And Pfisterer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Joe, thanks for coming.
Yeah.
All right, next year, next up, not next year, next up is the fiscal year budget timeline. This is just an information item. Ryan, you have the floor.
So this is just a timeline, I think, that's been presented in the past, really just to kind of go over the future budget process that we have, and just kind of put out there what we look at in the next few months, and how the past few months with the levy affects next year's budget for the FY '26 budget. That was just information, if anybody has any questions, does that mean you have your own?
I mean, it's pretty straightforward, it shouldn't surprise you. Pretty straightforward, but very complex and. No doubt. All right, moving on to committee reports. First up is NSSO, Mr. Ronstadt, you are our representative.
All right, well, I've been looking forward to this. This is attached as the strategic plan, I should say, initial summary for kind of where we're at right now. I hope we've all had a chance to look over it. You know, some highlights I would like to talk over. I think we're restating some of our mission, our vision, values, and priorities. Really, those things haven't changed. We really weren't focused on, you know, shifting that, we're working on the execution side. But it's good to just see it all in one place and kind of get a, you know, just restate it. I think that the piece that we're looking for guidance on here are, out of the strategic plan process so far, we had two full days where we had all of the eight-member district superintendents, business managers, and special services assistant superintendents, several board meetings, or several board members, one parent, and various members of the NSSO staff. And while this one page of priorities here doesn't seem like a lot, every word was kind of discussed and worked through. So out of the strategic.
Every word.
So these priorities are, you know, I think, you know what, I'm going to take a minute on my freedom, just because I think it's worth it. And, you know, what I'm, I think, looking for here as the NSSO representative is a general consensus to move forward with these, and the NSSO board would like to formally adopt these as our priorities as we move into a planning phase to now develop how we're going to implement these priorities. So the first of four priorities is that we will develop and execute a fiscally responsible, long-range facilities plan that prioritizes a safe and supportive environment for all students and staff. Number two, we will design and utilize a continuous improvement process for instruction and program development that is responsive to the evolving needs of all students. Three, we will implement a well-defined advisory and governance structure that ensures collaborative decision-making and engagement of all member districts and NSSO. We will recruit, and the fourth, I'm sorry, is we will recruit and retain high-quality staff through effective hiring and a positive work culture that demonstrates support, value, recognition, and worth. Next up is the planning process. So from here, the administration has been tasked with developing specific plans, targets, and really fleshing out the rest of the strategic plan, which is all part of this, to, you know, take us to the next step. And we're very excited. I think, you know, somebody said, and I keep thinking about it, that over those two days, you know, a lot of discussions, but there was never a discussion about, you know, NSSO's value or their contribution to the community, and it really, somebody said that it kind of felt like, almost like a recommitment to the mission and to their role in helping some of our previous kids. So that was really a, that was really a cool, cool kind of take on that. So that's by far the biggest thing.
Funny you use that word, I was going to, and this whole, I kind of took this as a recommitment to a lot of people. To your staff, to your students, to the member districts, you know, to the superintendents, your board, it's really a refocus on you then.
Yeah, and I think, you know, a lot of the things, the, out of the priorities, and, you know, and I think we are trying to keep it, you know, letting the document speak to itself, but, you know, there's definitely, there's definitely some work to be done, but, you know, it's, you know, there was no, you know, everything was put on the table, you know, it was very open, positive, constructive conversation and direction, and we're really excited about what will come of this, both from a, you know, delivery of services, of, you know, from a communication and collaboration step between the member districts and NSSO, and both in serving our, you know, each member district's needs for the, for kids. Also training, you know, I mean, that was on the Friday, the last Monday, I'm sorry, of winter break, I think NSSO had well over 1,000 people that they trained as part of their delivery of professional learning, and we've got a really deep bench there and a lot of, you know, accumulated knowledge of things. So just, just really excited.
Robert, do you know, has NSSO had a strategic plan prior, ever, that you know of?
They've had a strategic plan, I think that they've called, I mean, how do I say this nicely? I think they've had direction and they've had plans, but I don't think it's been at this, this level or at this.
Score.
This scope.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say, like Robert said, that the priorities really reflect a lot of changes that need to happen, but really represent the business managers, the student services teams, the board members, the superintendents, all of that packaged into four priorities, so.
Yeah, this is, I mean, we've been, I mean, this has been on the kind of target list to, you know, and we still got more to go, for sure. We're not, we're not done by any stretch, but, I mean, we've been working towards this for several years now, and I'm just excited to start getting paid for it and really, really make it some, really move in the organization forward.
And I think, like, part of the priorities is this communication of NSSO board members bringing back more information or consistent information, so that the boards at home feel like they are also invested in the process and the things that are happening at NSSO. So I think as this moves along, that's going to be a vested, you know, focus to try to continue to keep that communication flowing.
Well, I think bringing this to our attention is certainly a great step in that process.
And I think a lot of it's got, there's, there's a lot of things to work out there. I mean, there's, you know, there's eight different member districts, they all have a different relationship and kind of need from NSSO. Some people have more in-house services, some people less. There's, you know, each board member is different and communicates in a different mode, so we're trying to find balance with that. We're also, you know, I think one of the biggest things here is just getting, you know, and it is our first priority is to, you know, review and that advisory and that governance structure. So, you know, part of that is just getting, aligning communication between member district superintendents, the business managers, and the special services for them to all, you know, align and, you know, have more input to direct the member district board, which again, you know, all this stuff's got, it's complex, you know, democracy's kind of messy and slow sometimes, but it, it works, and I'm really, I'm really excited to get everybody, you know, more voice and more participation, but at the same time, you know, looking towards, you know, streamlining, towards, you know, better identifying, you know, one of the things that's driven this is that, you know, there's definitely some facilities needs over there that have not been projected out as well, maybe, as here. And that's okay, right? I mean, we can all kind of just, you know, in hindsight, yeah, we'd love to, but whatever, we're busy doing other things, but now it's time to lay those things out, make a plan, you know, and, you know, of course, still with a focus on delivering educational results to the student population.
I think when you have those dollars coming back, we ask for, which is perfectly kind, like, we all understand, but other boards might, like, you need that communication, almost transparency, in order to have the trust to say, okay, we believe what you are asking for. I like, I don't, the content, this made me off, my brain just goes here. Are these going to be, like, printed, like, are these priorities final? They're going to be, like, put on some, because I just want to type those, and I'll go with your.
I was arguing over, like, abstruse commas and things like that.
Well, there's some, like, compound adjectives that need to be added, so.
I don't know if you want to get involved in that, but.
I don't, but I also, it's a school, so I feel like I should have proper.
Yeah. Sure, I'd absolutely take that.
I, I think this is a great base for what you guys are going to do. I'm looking forward to the, the next step that you're already kind of previewing for us. When I read it, because you shared it with Dr. Mergely and I a little earlier, and I think I was expecting it to be already there.
Yeah.
And I, and not knowing how far you were in the process, and that's on me. So, it kind of dialed me back, which I needed, and I like this, I really do. And I love the collaboration and, and as, like you said, I like the openness.
Thank you. I mean, I think we're working, we're working hard to not just put together a pretty documented some objectives, but, you know, put some, put some actual plans into place with, you know, better communication with, you know, and understanding of, you know, investment needs and priorities and, you know, really, you know, in the arc of, you know, I've been saying this a lot, that, you know, in the arc of special education, you know, when NSSC O was founded in the 60s, there was no mandate for special education. I mean, there was a lot of, a lot of times where a child that, you know, needed special services, you know, especially to a certain point, they might just be told not to come to school. Imagine how foreign that is to us now, that we would think about turning away any student, okay? And over that arc of time, how much more, you know, sometimes we can get beaten down by, you know, some progress that we may or may not make in terms of equity, but look at that progress, you know? Where now, you know, every kid is taken and is taken into our schools, is educated to the best possible level that we can and, you know, in some cases, you know, even sent to, you know, a specialized organization like NSSC O that can excel in that and that has helped our, you know, not only those kids, but it's helped our community as a whole to develop, you know, centers of excellence and knowledge of how to, how to help, how to help every kid. And that really, you know, speaks volumes to things and, you know, when, when NSSC O started, you know, you know, society probably thought that, yeah, all those kids need to be educated, and now we're all sitting around here thinking about how we can do better for them. What a, what a change. What a change. I thank, you know, everybody, you know, here and all the previous boards, the community for the shift of attitudes, the administrators, the teachers and the educators that have, you know, helped to push that mindset and those directives in an area that really changes lives, so.
Is there any other direction you want to bring back to your board from us on this? What you...
No, just a, you know, kind of a, a general agreement of the, of the priorities and, you know, like I said, I really want to bring back an enthusiastic, yes, my board is on board with these priorities and, you know, we endorse the next steps to continue doing planning.
I believe we have a consensus, have we?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you all. You know, I know this is a topic I'm very passionate about and I'm very excited to, you know, have the audience to talk about here.
No doubt. Thank you.
More thanks from my side than you thinking, you're honored. I love that you're our representative and what you've been contributing to NSSC O and what you've been a part of. Just think in the past eight years that I've either been attending board meetings or being a part of the board, over the last year, I'd say it's 20 times more information and progress than the second before that, so.
Absolutely.
Whether you're the impetus or just a member to spearhead and support it going, I'll give you all the credit, but...
I'll take, I'll take some of that credit, but it definitely is a, you know, it's been a, you know, it takes a while to, to turn a battleship, you know, so it's been a, it's been a, a big effort on a lot of people's parts to, you know, kind of steer, steer the ship in a new direction and, you know, I know some of the change, it might feel like it's coming quickly, some of the change not too, too slowly, but it's, it's, it's coming and I'm definitely very excited to see the, the progress going in what I definitely think to be a very positive direction.
I, I support the priorities. I like that there's not too many. If you have too many, you're not going to get any of them.
That's right.
So, there are four good ones despite the compound adverb...
Adjective.
Adjectives. You have to point out which one that is. They're good.
Going back to our professional development, they said if you have more than five, you don't have any.
Anytime the two adjectives come for one, I don't need...
Oh, no. All right, are we good?
We're good.
President's report, upcoming events. January 18th, we have an all-district PTC event, Chicago Wolves game at 7:00 PM at the Allstate Arena. Tickets need to be purchased ahead of time and the links are available on social media. January 21st, there is a operations committee meeting. I will not be there. I'll double-check with Kim to make sure that she will be there so that way the rest of the committee can meet. January 29th, create a cuddly chipmunk owl or eagle. This is one of the coolest things we got going.
It's so, you spend a lot of money on stuff animals that they can fear.
So, that's at Prairie Trails at 6:00 PM and you do need to pre-register if you're going to create a cuddly. February 8th, there is Euclid Fun Fair from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. February 18th, the Board of Education meeting over at Prairie Trails at 7:00 PM. On February 18th, we have our special board meeting, which is the superintendent evaluation. We're going to start off with a dinner, we'll, you know, we'll all eat kind of a working dinner and then we'll formally meet at 6:00 PM. Just a quick timeline, Jody's going to complete her portion of her evaluation by February 1st, then each board member will have two weeks to complete their evaluate, evaluation of her. Then the evaluation will be compiled and we'll bring the final results to the special meeting on February 18th, where we will review ours and hers, collaborate and review and discuss. Anybody have any questions on that?
That, that's the meeting when Jody's sitting in there and she looks at all our compiled responses and ratings?
Well, she looks at it before...
No, she's not at it. That's the one we, we need as board and we will, we will kind of discuss our own evaluations on it. You need to have it done by then. We'll do it at another meeting after that. You still do that, you're right.
Okay, all right.
You're putting the cart before the horse. Pull your jets over there, will you?
I'll slow my roll.
Thanks, that one works too, whatever. And then we've got the North Cook Dinner, the Spring Dinner in March. Patty's registration open for that?
Yes. It's down on the future top...
Oh, that's right. I got to slow my own roll. All right, then let's go to superintendent's report. Dr. Mergely, you're up.
Okay, I'll stand for this one because I feel like I'm handling that, you guys. Yeah, it's hard. Okay. Okay, happy to be here to present the mid-year update. I was planning on talking a lot and Karen said almost, almost, everything that I was going to say, so I may stumble a little bit to not repeat, but honestly, you're going to see a good mirroring of the work from the buildings to the district, like my role in that work. Obviously, she referenced me a couple of times, but there are several things that I would have said exactly the way Karen did earlier, so. So, the mid-year progress tonight is guided by these three key elements, no surprise. The strategic plan, the district goals and my own superintendent goals. So, tonight, they're all intertwined, I'm not talking about them separately, but just know that these three elements are influencing the work that we have done so far. So, let's go back to June 11th, last summer, that was the last time that you heard from us as a core group from the cabinet, from the buildings, kind of summarizing the end of the year last year and the work that we accomplished. So, just to take you back a little bit, I'm not going to talk about these areas, but the work last year was anchored in these three areas of the strategic plan, collaboration, curriculum and community. And really, last year, the focus was to apply and expand the work. And so, we had taken all of the things that we had learned, but from my perspective, I wanted to see the work come to life, meaning I wanted to see those adaptive strategies that Karen talked about. I wanted to see them move beyond Karen and beyond a principal in their staff meeting and move to team meetings or sit-team meetings or classrooms. I wanted to see the work start to expand throughout the buildings, throughout the district, so that it could begin to kind of get to where we are now. So, so that was really the work last year. We had a lot of great accomplishments in a lot of areas, but that overarching theme was to really expand upon what we had started. So, moving into this year, it was about the same time, actually May, where you guys all approved the goal for the, this following school year. So, again, our goal this year is to strengthen, to anchor, to basically systematize, and then also to see, like, what components are missing, you know? Do we have any lagging or missing components that maybe we overlooked last year and then how do we fill those gaps? So, how are we doing this? And again, I'm going to repeat a little bit of exactly what Karen said earlier, but we have to be super-focused and super-intentional. And so, when we talk about these research-based practices, we cannot just focus on core classes. It can't be math curriculum. It can't be our language arts curriculum. It has to be something that is good for multilingual students, is good for our student services, our special education students. We're hitting our fine arts programs. We're hitting PE. We have to work on these strategies that are universal, that are good for all staff and all kids. We have to assess and monitor to know what's actually happening. And when I say that, oftentimes, it's easy to launch a plan, it's easy to say, this is what we're going to do this year, and you let it go. But you really have to be present. You have to be in the classrooms. I have to be at those meetings. We have to be present to actually know if the work is happening. We can't just say like, oh, yeah, looks like it's happening, or I think it's happening. We have to get in there and we have to know. So, that has been, you know, these are the non-negotiables for the year to get the work done. We talked about use of data, you know that we use data, and so I think the key for this year is to find those lagging or missing pieces of data. We have rubrics, we have common assessments now, but are we looking at data for the kids at the top? Are we looking at only the kids who are falling below? Are we using data at all different tiers? And so, I think that's the focus for this year, is what are those missing components that we haven't dug into the data? And let's address that. And then, having leaders to facilitate and grow the change. I need leaders that are going to inspire their team. I need leaders who can support and challenge at the same time. Leading a building is not easy work. It takes a lot of thought, it takes a lot of time, but I need the people who are willing to have the tough conversations, who are excited about diving into the work. I think you see that when you hear the principals present what they're doing, and that's what we need in order to make these things happen. So, let's fast forward to where we are today. Well, I, I mean, I'm proud to say we have lots to celebrate. I'm super proud of the work that we've done over the last couple of years and that, that obviously continues into this year. I took a few minutes to walk through the timeline because, you know, first on both sides, you see a successful launch to the school year. So, I just want you to understand that the work doesn't happen by chance. It is a result of months of careful planning. So, well before that June meeting last summer, I had already met with the principals to talk about where they were going for this coming school year. We met again in August to tighten up those plans of where they were going this school year. We all come together to launch the school year, everyone from cabinet and the buildings to make sure, to ensure that the launch of the year is clear, it's focused and we're inspiring the people that we're working with. I think Christie even sent calendar invites already today for the new staff meetings coming in August. So, we're constantly prepping and thinking ahead. And again, it doesn't happen by chance. It's not like, oh, hey, it's August, what are we going to do this school year? It's very well-organized and designed, and I'm super proud of the whole team for that effort. So, I thought that I was going to be able to talk about each of these things that I highlighted, but I would be here all night. So, I am going to continue to talk about a few district accomplishments. One of those is, next on the list is the, the district partnerships. You know I've talked about how blessed and proud I am of this January in-service, that we get to take advantage of five or six surrounding districts, we get to partner with them. Like Robert said, NSSC O had 1,900 registrations. That means our assistants, our student services teams across all of these districts, 1,900 separate registrations for professional development opportunities just on January 6th. Like, there's no way we could offer that. And so, our partnerships have really, I think, expanded well beyond, like, what we're able to offer on our own. And so, one I also wanted to highlight this year is a collaborative with District 214. And so, it was a math collaborative led by the University of Illinois, the Metro Chicago Math Initiative, and they were outstanding facilitators. So, over the course of several days, they brought together math teachers from all of the District 214 high schools, they brought together math teachers from all of the feeder middle schools, and they all sat around tables, talking about math, thinking differently about math, pushing back on different ways of approaching math. And that partnership, I mean, was pretty amazing to be able to get all of those working pieces together, but the facilitation was, was pretty awesome. So, they, they did some work first semester and then, and then this semester, they're going, those coaches from the math collaborative are going to be visiting the high school classrooms, the middle school classrooms and being able to see what is happening across all of the high school districts and the, and the middle school districts. So, that, again, I think goes back to the relationships that we have with our feeder districts and the superintendents and being able to, you know, partner on some of these things that there's no way that we can do on our own. Also new this year is Christie's work with curriculum rollouts. So, every year, when we have a new curriculum rollout, of course, we're going to get coaching support from that, that publisher to come in and help train our teachers. Going deeper this year has been these instructional walkthroughs that Christie, the coaches and both elementary principals have engaged in. So, instead of just getting professional development on the new curriculum, now they're making instructional rounds, watching for really those things that Karen is looking for at the building. So, now you've got a team of people getting into the classroom, looking for how they're using this new curriculum, but then also mirroring that and infusing that with the building work, like, so much better of approach than a, you know, maybe a one-size-fits-all PD session. So, so I, that is, to me, is super cool because that has just gone so much deeper to be able to debrief on what they're seeing and it be super-relevant to what's actually happening in our classrooms. Continuing down to student programming, so this is a little bit of Carrie's world. And so, you know, we often talk about the constant changing needs of kids, the intensity, the frequency of their, their services. And so, in Carrie's world, continuing to evaluate student programming, the resources that students need, the related services that students need is really an ongoing piece of her work. If you remember, or maybe you don't, you may not remember, but about six years ago, we started a self-contained special education program here at Euclid for a small group of first graders. So, since that time, we've opened Prairie Trails, that classroom has grown into two classrooms here at the elementary school, and those kids have also now migrated over to the middle school. So, that program in and of itself, the curricular needs, the professional development needs of the teachers, the related service needs, needs constant attention, constant focus, just to make sure, like, is it still doing what we intended it to do six years ago? Is it still meeting the needs of our kids? And so, that, that's been a big piece of her work to make sure those kids are successfully moving into the middle school. But also, the pre-K programming has, has been changed a little bit. We added, about the same time, six years ago, we added an extra pre-K class, and at the time, that program was structured to meet the needs of our district at that time. So, we had what we called in a, like, an intensive needs section in pre-K. This year, Carrie mixed that up a little bit. We, we changed that programming to be more of a blended model. So, instead of having all of our students with more intensive needs in one section, we've moved them out into all of the sections, which has enabled us to take more non-IEP students, and it has also enabled us to better balance the classroom in terms of numbers with IEP and non-IEP. in terms of numbers with IEP and non-IEP. That gives those kids more exposure to typical developing peers. So, again, consistently monitoring our programs, our services, that includes what NSSEO offers and not just rubber stamping like, "Oh, we're just continuing this, continuing this." We've had evolving changes of student needs. Okay, moving down to innovation. I would say the biggest shift this year has been using technology to expand on like higher-order thinking. And so, we've made significant progress in moving just beyond using technology for, like, as an application tool, writing, editing, calculating, things like that, and now using it more for analyzing and evaluating. And it really lends itself well to the building goals because turning over power to the kids and allowing them and teaching them to have more dialogue and discourse then makes them better creators of their work. And so, a couple of things that I will highlight. Alicia's been very key in supporting the effort because this year, she's been in the buildings. She has regular time on Thursdays with the staff, providing lessons and supporting the principal work in their discourse and also partnering with the, the building coaches to expand on the staff skill set. And so, CSO, I'm sure that word is familiar to you. That's, that's a platform that we use. It's not new, but CSO offers a wide range of learning tools. So, CSO allows kids to type, speak, use video, draw, add images. So, we can use CSO at this sort of a level, you know, a basic level, or we can maximize the use of our platforms. And so, that's just one way that Alicia's been partnering with the principals to expand and maximize some of the tools that we already have to allow the students to create and move up in those higher-order thinking. I would also add that a new tool this year is Magic School AI, which teachers are using to leverage differentiation. They're using it to connect lessons to world, real-world scenarios. It's assisting with lesson planning. It makes rubrics. It helps kids create a review guide. So much of a teacher's work is, is lesson planning, creating. And nowadays, curriculum is not in the book and you just flip the page and go from lesson to lesson. And so, this magic AI is a way for teachers to be able to use their time artificially, think beyond their own capacity, and just generate ideas. And so, again, that's just another example of some of the tools and the platforms that we have either added or enhanced to move up that higher-order thinking. So, finally, on, on the district accomplishments, I do want to highlight the business office transition. And again, I mean, I'm going to highlight it, but I reflected a little bit and I realized that I definitely underestimated the amount of time that this transition would take, would be for me. And, you know, quite honestly, like, I was the only constant between, between Lindle leaving and Ryan coming. So, I felt an immense amount of pressure just to make sure that so many of the things that were up in the air transitioned nicely. And so, I had to micromanage and get involved in things in a, in a department that is not mine, in, in, in an area that I'm not comfortable micromanaging. But, and, and again, like, I just didn't anticipate the number of, like, unfinished tasks that would roll over that we've had to tackle, like, even in the coming months after, after Ryan started. So, I'm incredibly grateful that Ryan brings with him a wealth of business knowledge and a variety of roles within the business department. I'm so thankful that he had several months to transition. You know, there just is never enough time to address everything. And so, I think, you know, much of the summer was focused on Euclid, getting open on time and being in those meetings and being here in the building. But then, you know, as the year started, we continued to work through issues like getting grant payments, getting in systems to get grant payments processed, managing the electric bus grant, overseeing the Department of Energy grant, changes to the solar panels, like, you know, just some of those things that really, there was no way to anticipate, but just kind of came up along, along the way. So, beyond all of that, I think one of the most important pieces to me in this whole transition was bringing in a leader who could really, like, unify the department, support the department, and, you know, just foster that positive work environment at the district office. I mean, you all know, we have faced staffing challenges with that crew, either due to resignations or key retirements. I mean, Tracy and Lindle retiring at the same time, that, that was a huge gap to, to, to work through. And it just took time. I mean, we did it. It took time. And I did say that I might be eating my words here, but I am pleased to report, obviously, we're fully staffed. We have gotten to the point where people have their workload. Whereas before, when we were short-staffed, people had to take on other people's workload. It was stressful. Things were getting messy because, you know, somebody was taking something that really didn't, they shouldn't have maybe been taking. So, we're in a really good place now. We're fully staffed. Everybody has their workload and it's rebalanced. And I, I wholeheartedly say that the team feels very supported by Ryan. He's back there every day, probably multiple times a day, but he is problem-solving side-by-side with them. I mean, there's things that come up and they figure it out together. And, and I think, you know, just that climate and culture of the transition, again, one of my most important priorities, but I'm super happy to see where we're at now, you know, a few months down the road. So, looking at building accomplishments, I mean, you guys have already heard from three of our buildings this year. I mean, each of the buildings highlighted their instructional focus. They highlighted discourse in the classrooms and how they're using data with their teams, and their strong emphasis on student growth. So, next month, you'll hear from Prairie Trails, and I know that she also will share how they are using data. Their data looks amazing, but they still are working on growing every student. So, she's also going to share that with you and their instructional focus. And, you know, Karen gave me a lot of nice kudos, but quite honestly, like, we have amazing building principals. We have amazing cabinet members. And we, you know, the, the lamest phrase I could think of was like, "We have all the right people on the bus," but we really do. We have, we have great leaders who are instructionally focused. They, they work hard. They make progress. And they have their sights set on, on where they want to go. I mean, honestly, I've said this before, but I could not ask to have a better team to do this work because they are, they are doing it. And, and I'm super proud of, of everything that we've accomplished over the years, but as we continue to try to systematize some of these things this year. So, looking ahead, again, you'll, you'll hear from Prairie Trails in February. In March, we have Alicia coming back to dig in deeper with technology and innovation. In April, you typically hear from Christie on curriculum updates and things of that nature. In May, we'll hash out my goals for next year, so you can start thinking about that. And then in June, you know, here we are back to, to the end of the year kind of summary presentation. So, I too agree with Janine. I think you all like this format, but I think it's, the pacing throughout the year is a nice way to really see the full picture of the work and the progress as, you know, as the year goes on. So, I could say, any questions or any feedback in terms of what you would like to see or hear more of as the year continues on or in preparation, you know, for June? Obviously, still a half a year left to go, but I welcome any feedback or any areas of focus that y'all would like to hear more about.
Any comments or questions?
I just appreciate the specific examples that you provided. Sometimes in the past, things were a little bit ambiguous. So, it's hard to gauge, like, where we went from the end of the year check to like the mid-year. So, I really appreciate some of the real specifics. I know that we don't get them the answer often, but it's nice just to hear.
I did try to stay up here, but then, because, you know, if I get too specific, I feel like I'm talking too much, but I'm proud of the specifics. So, and it's...
Well, the examples really...
...what I enjoy, like, spending time with, too, doing.
And the examples, they just enhance what you've, I mean, and really kind of nail down what you've spoken to. So, yeah, and I, and I just want to say that I appreciate seeing a leader that is not afraid to thank the rest of their team and to really pay praise because I think that that doesn't happen often enough. So, it's, it's great that, I mean, don't be too humble, but it's, you know what I mean. But it's nice to, it's nice to know that the team that you have, you're very supportive of them and it seems to be reciprocative. So, thank you for the update.
I love what Janine just said. Right.
Write it in the books, Karen.
For the record, gotta take that from Donna.
Okay, I'll just add, I agree with everything that Janine said. And, you know, one thing you said that you kind of, you know, I don't want to say you glossed over, but you said, you know, getting the right people on the bus in the right seats. That is probably one of, as a leader, that's probably one of the hardest things to do, you know, selecting and growing talent. And we really do have a wonderful team here. And you deserve a lot of credit for putting the team together and growing them. You're doing both of those things. And it's been wonderful to see your, your growth, too, over the years. And, you know, really proud of our, our district and what, what you've accomplished, what the whole team's accomplished. So, awesome job.
I have a request.
Yes.
I don't know, maybe it's too, maybe it should be, it should have been earlier. Or maybe it's next year's presentations. I would like to hear principals' thoughts on how they, like, foster, I guess, grade levels, teachers working together. As a parent, in my experience, sometimes I see that working really well where, you know, all of the second grade class, I feel like they're all, they have a common agenda. I feel confident that the second grader is getting a consistent, whatever class you're in, a consistent... They're all on the same page. And you can see it, like, you know, we've talked to another parent, "Oh, yeah, we have that and we did this." And other grades, I have not had a similar experience. Someone I have. So, I, and I get, there's a lot of factors, but it's, I, we're like, coming, being efficient in a grid, like, not recreating separate things helps with efficiencies and consistency. And I was just curious...
Yeah.
...how the principals infuse that.
I'm sure they have different thoughts on it, but... Good, alright.
Did I say that right?
Nope.
Yeah, no, I heard.
I understood, I understand.
You fixed it.
I understand. Consistency in the instruction within the grade.
Something I thought of during the presentation, and I obviously can go over our calendar and look this up. Are we always going to the schools at the same time every year?
No, we, uh...
We'll be seeing that up, right?
Yes. I think Karen was in October last year, January this year.
Good.
Middle school was January last year, so...
It was in here last year.
Yeah. Yeah, we do mix it up on purpose.
Right, because otherwise it's unfair to the school at the beginning of the year because there's not a lot of data points yet. Okay, good. Just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is communications to the board. We did receive one email and that is in the board book for review. FOIA requests, we had two FOIA requests, both handled by Ryan. Thank you, from Step Steel and Smart Procure. And then next up is future topics. I have one, as I alluded to earlier. The North Cook Division Dinner is on March 4th. Again, we're being recognized at that dinner as a board for our board governance. So, it would be great to have as many of us there to share that and to share our success and celebrate it together. So, hopefully, you're available and you could attend. Please let Patty know. We need to know by February 21st, but obviously you could let her know tonight. I'm in, by the way.
I'm in.
And does anybody else have a topic they would like to consider for future topics at this time? Okay, hearing none. That is everything on the agenda. So, let me entertain a motion a second to adjourn the meeting at 8:45 PM.
So, the second?
Moved by Friedland, second by Fister. Please call roll.
Okay, I vote yes. Fister?
Yes.
Camargo?
Yes.
Grinby?
Yes.
Friedland?
Yes.
And Ron Staff?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
All right, we'll see you on February 11th at Prairie Trails.